Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, July 2. We hope everyone is enjoying their Independence Week, we want to call it, and I hope you got some family and friends and enjoying everything. And the weather's been really nice. We get a little rain today, but sounds good for the weekend. So with me today, I had Don Schwenker, Anand Flago, myself, Mike Stein, so your county supervisors. We have Shelley as the sitting in for the Assistant Auditor today. And Bjorn is IT Director, Luann, our Executive Assistance in the background, and Mary is here from the newspaper. First on our agenda today is Mr. Todd Keeney, our Jackson County Engineer. Good morning, Todd.
Good morning.
Morning.
Normally, you know, Jayden has been doing this to kind of get the the feel for that, but he is at a staff meeting with the shop foreman and the foreman. So he's taking upon himself to schedule weekly meetings to go over the climate repairs, projects, that kind of thing, so.
Sounds like a good idea.
Shouldn't do them on Tuesdays.
Personally, yeah.
Well, normally, normally it's Mondays, but I believe Sean was off yesterday, so he did it today. So, yeah, normally they don't do them on Tuesdays. So anyway, we have one item on the agenda. It's a entrance permit approval. This is an existing entrance that they're asking the 9011 address for, so.
Side distance and everything's okay?
Side distance is short on the, the approach from the north, so it'll have a hidden, so it's 400 feet, so it's not too bad, but it'll have a hidden driveway.
Does it already have one if it's an existing?
I don't think it does. I think, I think it will, will put in, because it would have been installed prior to maybe that requirement, so now it will. When it comes up to this permit, it'll be upgraded to what the current standard are, so.
So it was not an entrance permit before? It was a field or was it?
It was an entrance before, but now they want a 901 address. So when we, when they request that, we go through the entrance permit process.
Yeah, okay.
So moving on.
Motion to second to approve the entrance permit for Dale Portson Van Bear Township as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carried.
So just real quick, on the Y61, the paving job, the asphalt interlayer is done. They're moving out to Clinton County. He's got a job north of Elwood. That they're, same thing, they're gonna be doing interlayer on when they're done with that. It shouldn't only take exposure, they said it can get done in a day. Then they're gonna come back and start doing the surface or the base mix on the.
So are the lanes still uneven then, right now?
No, they should be back.
It should be back level, okay.
Yeah. So they did those.
That's actually a pretty good job if they're not waiting or then expecting that, that, you know, the returns or something.
You gotta pay attention.
Stay in your lane. Well, you know, it, it happens if you get off of it, then you're back on it is, you know.
Yeah, so, so going and doing what they call strength and leveling course to level up and then get the 2% crown. Because you don't want to adjust the crown with the inner layer because it's about one and a half times more expensive per ton. So if you're gonna adjust crown, cross slope, you want to do that with regular strength and leveling mix, which is much less expensive than the inner layer. Because the inner layers, it's got like 9% AC content, but normally it's like 6% and the stuff is heavily polymerized, so it's a very expensive binder, basically.
So the inner layer, is that to minimize the cracking and such?
So it's a, it's a, it's a stress crack mitigation layer is basically what it comes down to.
And I thought when the, under, whatever we call the red, red bridge or the red school, I thought we had a lot of cracking in that after we, that was when this inner layer was, I thought fairly new, if I remember right, but.
Yeah, they've made some adjustments too. There's what they call the massacre test. They've increased the amount of recovery that are supposed to be accumulated in that test. So they, originally it was like in the eighties. Now, the requirement, I believe, is up over 90% recovery, which in a nutshell, basically means it's more durable to resist cracking, basically. It's hard, it's hard to describe. It's a, it's a dense but flexible mix. Like you could take a bucket and dump it on the ground and it will literally spread out on the ground overnight. That's, that's how, I guess, flexible it is, but it's very dense. It's very low void, so.
No, I hope it's a good product. Yeah, I mean, it really, really makes a nice road, doesn't it?
So the other thing, we got a competent person training for the, the two new guys that have kind of been switched around through the bidding process, so. Other than that.
I've heard good things about them. Word on the street, but that's, I guess I ain't working with them.
That's weird you would hear word on the street.
Well, I just want to give a shout out to, I think Randy was the guy that came out from Secondary Roads to put up the signs and stuff.
Bomber?
For the next weekend. Yeah, he was out there bright and early. Not only did he help get the signage out and put out, he put out, we just asked for Hurstville Road. He put some signs out over by Rock, Iron Bridge. Coming in, he puts those signs there. He also sat over there and kind of helped control traffic a little bit or whatever, just with his truck and his legs and stuff like that. He kind of went over and above and he helped us picking up some of the big signs and stuff. So he was a huge asset and I just want to give a shout out. Because it was very much appreciated and he, he worked very well. I mean, couldn't be, I can't say enough about what he did, so.
Yeah, he's, and he's very safety minded. Like he's on our safety committee and he's like, he's, he's a very big proponent of safety too, so.
Yeah, because like I say, the request was just for Hurstville Road from Rockdale up to the Lime Kilns. And he goes, yeah, and I put signs over on Iron Bridge coming down the hill too, some slow signs to let, to let people know. I was just like, and awesome. And then when I got over there, I saw and he had flaggers on the top and I was like, wow, this is awesome. We put our signs up and then he's like, because we had some big four foot bikes ahead kind of signs and he goes, if you want, I'll just pick those up when I go through and you can just come get them from the shop whenever you want. Wow, thanks. That's, that, that was, he was a godsend. He worked very well, so it was very much appreciated and noted what he was doing.
It was a good event, I think, for county and city and.
114 participants.
Yeah, from, I think it was five states that.
Seven, I think, to pay.
Seven, seven states. And Deputy Crocker showed up. At first, we didn't think, the sheriff's office said they weren't gonna have people, but Crocker was there. When we were putting signs out, he was following behind with the lights on on Iron Bridge to kind of slow people down because there's no shoulder. Then he did a lot of traffic control on 62 and he parked on Iron Bridge when a lot of the canoes were getting out. He had his lights on, so it was a very, I mean, there was a lot of people going above and beyond and that was an unexpected bonus that really slowed. Because the pedestrians that were watching on Iron Bridge as people came around was an unexpected thing. And they parked on the east side of Iron Bridge going up where there is a shoulder. And they were walking across, then they have Crocker and Randy there kind of helping slow traffic. And the traffic going through that day, that morning while we were there was like 20 miles an hour. It was very controlled. And one of the big benefits we heard from the race was the fact that it was so spectator friendly. So people could watch at Iron Bridge and watch at Bridgeport and watch at a lot of different spots. It, it went very well and a lot of it was because of these people that kind of did extra that we didn't plan for, so. Let's just pass it along.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Todd. Have a good holiday.
Yep, you too.
What's his actual name, Randy Wood?
Tyson.
What's his name?
Tyson.
And he is called Bomber?
Don't, yeah. Don't be blowing his head up too big in the paper there. No, we appreciate all the help that we're getting to open up, so. All right, are there any, any visitors or citizens that would like to approach the board this morning? Seeing or hearing none, I believe we have Rachel Anderson, District Rep from, for Congresswoman Mariah Miller Meeks. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you all?
Good.
Well, I just wanted to stop in. It's been a while. You try to get through your, you have your list of people and then you realize you missed some or you just, time, time gets away from you. So I just wanted to stop in and say hi again, reintroduce myself. I know it's been a while. And what our office kind of offers, the Congresswoman talks a lot about how trying to make partnerships with the different, you know, we all have our different roles with levels of government and making sure that we're a resource to you all on the federal level. So if you have constituents of your own reaching out saying they're having issues with any federal agencies, IRS, Social Security, passports, Medicare, Medicaid, things like that, please send them our way. We're more than happy to help them kind of work through the process. Typically, what happens is we take a privacy release form. It's just a basic form that gives us permission to contact the agency on someone's behalf. Additionally, if you all are looking for letters of support for federal projects for grants, we're more than happy to offer those, generally speaking. We got to review it, but federal projects, generally, we're able to offer those letters of support.
Federal projects usually come with some red tape attached to them.
That is true. That is true, but.
Found that out.
Yeah, so things like, I know the fire departments can typically, typically go for a safer grant or something like that. So we've offered letters of support for safer grants in the past. The Bridge Infrastructure Improvement Act, people have reached out.
Bridge infrastructure, so Don's looking really hard for rent to be put in for canoe access or boat access down at Iron Bridge. But, you know, we just talked about it. We had the adventure race here in MacOgeton over the weekend and it was a oh, seven mile canoe and 10 mile bike or something.
Eleven and a half.
Okay, well.
Eleven and a half mile canoe, bike ride, three and a half, or three mile jogging back into town, kind of a pseudo Iron Man kind of thing.
Okay.
And we are currently gonna try to redo that bridge next year. And we'd like to upgrade the canoe. There is a canoe access there. We'd like to upgrade it a little bit to kind of further encourage tourism and growth in that aspect, because it's a beautiful asset that we should be taking advantage of.
Is it on the river?
Yeah.
On the MacOgeton River.
Okay.
So we're very fortunate to have the Mississippi and the MacOgeton, but it comes with a price tag when you have, when you put a bridge across that. If you have five bridges going across that MacOgeton River, it comes pretty pricey for a little town, our little county of Jackson, you know, that's, it's expensive.
No, it's, we're really trying to take advantage of, you know, the assets that we provide in tourism, getting people out into the nature. And again, it was, we hadn't done it in a couple of years because of COVID and post-COVID kind of things. So first year we did it, we drew from 70 states. There was 114 participants. And it was overwhelmingly lauded in the wildlife they saw, the scenery, the, the ease, the spectator accessibility. It just went very, very well. It starts in MacOgeton, ends in MacOgeton. It's just a great way to kind of, you know, showcase our area. And we'd like to see what's out there to kind of make it easier and more conducive as it grows. Because I think we had about a 90% discussion rate on, they're all coming back and they're telling people. So I would imagine that it's gonna grow, so.
How many years have you been doing it?
Uh, this was our 21st year, but we had to take two years off because, but this was the first year of the new route. Just because we had some safety concerns over the old route crossing 61 and all that. And four lanes and bicycles are just not, not the, not the greatest of partners. So the new race so far seemed to go very well. It was very well received and we're just, accessibility presents some challenges and stuff, but it is called an adventure race, so that's part of the adventure.
But it was easy. Everybody would do it.
That's right.
That's great. Jackson County is a beautiful county. I love coming up here and driving around. It's really beautiful. So that's exciting that you can bring people in through the race and have people word of mouth and keep increasing participation year after year.
I did listen in on her town hall meeting last week.
Yeah, it's gonna tell the town hall.
Well, we appreciate you coming up and, and setting with us for a bit. I may know it's a short period, I know, but at least you have the initiative to come up and meet us anyway. And if you got a couple of cards, maybe leave them with Luann or something.
Yes, I can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but thank you for having me. Again, really want to stress that if you ever need anything, please reach out. If we can't, can she do anything about her on the federal side down maybe for the jail being able to stay on.
Well, we've talked about that for legislation, you know, there's a couple of things that we don't like about it. I mean, the, the medication part of it, so that when, when they're incarcerated, then they're off of their Medicare. And we got to, you know, now we got a toothache, now we got a, we got a heart attack. Oh, I got cancer now, so now we got to pay for all this.
Okay.
Does that make any sense? Because they broke the law.
When they had Medicaid or Medicare or whatever before and then they get.
Soon they get incarcerated, then, then we're on the hook for all the.
They get disenrolled. They get disenrolled.
Okay.
And then you have the whole issue of two, them trying to get back on it. Once they do get released, okay, that creates a barrier.
That's for a small county, like I said. It, it, one, one disaster or one incident.
Juvenile, $65,000.
Yeah, once innocence can break the bank here, you know, I'm just saying.
Okay.
And we also have an issue with personnel with, with the jail side of it. So a, a female.
Can watch a male, but a male can't watch a female.
On duty, but, but the male can't watch female. Now, we're all equal nowadays, correct? So it makes an issue of, it makes an issue of hiring a lot easier if, if we can, nothing really.
I mean, with the camera systems and that, actually.
So with housing females, we always will have to have a female officer on duty, always.
And staffing, I mean.
Yeah, it's a staffing issue.
Staffing issue and.
Right.
Is staffing difficult in general as well, aside from that?
Yes. No.
Well.
The rest of the world that way. And then to have to segregate staffing that, we got to make sure every shift we have at least one female. That makes it tough because, again, not saying it's not a female role, but.
Well, they say a female can watch, a female can watch a male shower, but a male can't watch a female shower. And that's, it, it's just, it's weird.
Okay.
You shouldn't, either can go both ways or you can't go in either way, you know what I mean?
Right.
So it's confusing, but.
And then, you know, again, it's just a, it's a funding thing, staffing and funding issue, so. Trying to.
Unfunded.
Make it work, unfunded, yeah.
We're trying to, that is something we are constantly looking at to make sure that mandates that come through are funded and trying to to make that, because we know it's a burden, honey. You get these dictates from a higher level of government and how do you provide that service?
Right.
If you, if, when.
I mean, and if you look at it as.
It's already a small tax base.
As a business, I mean, a lot of, you know, you'd like to offer these things, but you've got to look at the business side of it. Oh, it's not feasible.
Right.
But then when you're told you have to, all right, it's not feasible, but suck it up.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Hope the rain clears a little bit and.
Yeah, no. Little rain will hurt.
We can't complain about that, what we prayed for last year.
I know, I know. We go back and forth.
I said it could let up for a week or so.
You have a good holiday and weekend also.
Yes, you too.
All right, Shelley.
Okay, my first item is the minutes from the June 25th, 2024 boards, board proceedings.
Make a motion to approve.
Say yes.
The motion to second to approve the minutes of the Jan, June 25th, 2024 board proceeding as written by order Smith and unauthorized publication in the official newspaper. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carried.
The next thing I have is the county recorder's report of fees collected for June. And she collected a total of $34,287.89.
So move it.
Second.
I have motion second to approve the unauthorized chair signature on the county recorder's report of fees collected for the month of June. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carried.
And then the last thing that I have is certificates of substantial completion for the, Together We Build Building.
Can we hold off on that until after John is here?
Sure.
And are you gonna do the claims?
Oh. Well, she wouldn't have it in a minute.
It's on my minutes. They're on my minutes.
Well, it's on this one.
The ones you handed out, so.
That's on the screen. I have claims for.
What, $433,785.55.
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the claims and warrant issued as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, thank you. We will wait to discuss with John. Luann?
Go meet Tex Johnson. We're running fast if you want.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, calendar for this week. 10:30 this morning, of course, is the Innovate 120's UX Sign Summer Intern Class Presentation. Across the street, Innovate 120, for any of you that want to go. Tomorrow, Wednesday, July 3rd at 9:00 AM is an RTA meeting interview for by Zoom for all of you. At 4:30 is tentatively a Wednesday, if possible, meeting for any of you that want to go to that. Also tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock, tentatively is Mississippi Valley's CEO meeting by Zoom for Don. I don't think that's been confirmed quite yet.
There is a Wednesday possible on the third? What'd you say?
It's a tentative. There's a T in front because he hasn't confirmed it, so maybe they're not doing it this week. I haven't heard.
Okay.
Thursday, July 4th, the entire courthouse will be closed for the Independence Day holiday. Monday, July 8th at 7:30 AM is tentatively an Early Childhood Iowa Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for NIN. And at 3 o'clock on Monday, there's tentatively a governing board special meeting in Davenport also for NIN. The next regular meeting will be Tuesday, July 9th at 9:00 AM. And then afternoon at 4 o'clock, there's tentatively a MacOgeton River Watershed Management Authority Executive Meeting in Monticello by Zoom for Don. All right, there's so many tentative things on there. Everybody's scrambling for the week, I think. Um, on my agenda this morning, I have two applications for fireworks permits. The first one is for Ernest Schultz for the Great River Threshers at 99 Centennial Street in Miles on the 12th of July.
Second, sorry.
I have motion and second to approve the Great River Threshers and Ernest Schultz, the fireworks permit as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
I also have an application for a fireworks permit for Brent Moore at 39950-195th Street in Bellevue, also on July 12th. We'll go through.
Say yes.
A motion and second to approve the fireworks permit for Brent Moore as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
That's all I have for you.
Again, just so everybody was aware, you got the emails last Friday. We was approached by an individual in Lake and had some questions about their display that they set off and they, I should say, the professional was supposed to get the permit and elapsed a little bit, it is, so we got the insurance verification and all that from him, so. Should be on the up and up. They do it every year and but there were some citizens that were concerned about insurance and liability, so we got that taken care of last week.
And I sent out the notifications. I just let them know there wasn't a permit in place for it.
Yep, so. Thank you. Have a good holiday.
You.
Any other boards or commission reports that we need at this time or want to elaborate on?
I did sit in on the Destination Iowa meeting.
Yesterday?
Monday, yeah.
Yeah.
And the biggest thing on that was he kind of came back with what the WHKS's bid would be to kind of start the process over on that. Just, just under 70,000 for them to do the engineering work. Obviously, that's higher than what they were predicting before of around 10,000. So.
So as I understand it, the funding for that will actually come out of the grant?
Yes, but it could mean that something else gets.
So might have to be, something else might have to be eliminated or changed.
Right, and they're putting it kind of out for bids in different.
Phases.
Kind of phases, so that way they do have everything in there that if more grant money becomes available, they have all the steps ready. They just got to go forward with flying for the grant, so. They do all kind of a rock walk over for now until they can get the second bridge funded or something. But again, they're putting it out that maybe the bids will come in under what they're thinking and maybe they can do the whole thing at one time here or it may be.
So they're still moving forward with it.
So they're still moving forward, but asking that when bids come in that they break it up into these sections.
And just as WHKS can get all this done on the timeframe required or?
They're sure hoping. They seem to think they can. So.
That's the information that we relate to me, yeah.
And the disc golf is definitely driving forward and sounds like the guy from WHKS is, that's in charge of that section is a huge disc golf person. From my understanding of what I, I got out of the one meeting we had, so.
I know it's a big thing.
Yeah, and then with Iris, the talk is, of course, depending on weather, end of July-ish, they should be kind of done up there in.
Spur Creek?
Spurs Creek.
So I did take a drive through there, you know, I mean, some of the residents last year had some concerns about that new blacktop street. You know, they were gonna cut that out and put the line in. They didn't cut it out. They took it all out, so they're gonna get a brand new street the way it looks to me.
I was gonna say, there's a lot of stuff.
They took the whole street out. They, they, yeah, so it looks like they're gonna get a whole new street.
Yeah, yeah, and some of the holdup will be, depending on the river to get.
Sure, down in the park.
Connected.
Thought they had that down in there already.
It's not connected.
Okay.
The.
Yeah, it's underwater right now.
And all that are set there, but they're not connected to the system.
Yeah, what if it's slow down the railroad up there?
Um, you know, I seen a train on that side track yesterday. They were, they were coming south. They said that's quite a process. They put all their tracks in and then they, it's lower, you know, much lower.
Yeah.
Well, they put all this rock on top of it, all this flint rock, and they come in there with this machine and
raise them up.
Jack that whole track, move ahead, jack that.
When we were there at that meeting or whatever, I was like, this is significant.
No, that crossing is about level now. Yeah, they're about level. But they lift the whole track. They said the equipment, my brother lives up there and.
Which is weird. I think they just get it up to that height to begin.
Like it would shake like all the cabins, their stuff off the shelves or.
Oh, yeah, I know. He said they come in and they shake that, they rattles and they're raising the track up and the rocks falling underneath it. So anyway, there's progress there, good or bad.
That's all I have.
I didn't have anything.
I do not. We'll take a short recess at this time. We'll reconvene at this time and we're joined by Mr. John Hanson, our construction manager for a couple of projects we got going on here. Good morning, John.
Good morning.
Morning, John.
Yeah, it's a little bit wet out here, but.
Good thing you got a roof over your head over there.
Yeah, well, it's a lot nicer here than when I was up north the other day, so. But I was gonna start with the Jackson County Fair. So basically, they have everything done. I've been on the contractors to switch out some locks from one door to the other. They have the hardware and the locks in the wrong place for the key. And we did some caulking on those back doors and they're, they're supposed to install some sweeps. Some sweeps aren't extended all the way to the jam. And that's why we were getting a little bit of leaking in there, I believe. They put, there are rain guards and stuff back there and it's difficult to keep them steel doors from leaking, but we're working towards that goal. I know that they can, they asked Stickley Electric to provide some additional outlets at the counter and such. And Stickley's supposed to be there that this week, take care of that. That's an extra that they put on. And Stickley is working on the lights. As far as the front entrance doors, they, the guys came and they extended sweeps on the front doors. And they also installed some rain guards over top of the aluminum storefront doors. Try to keep that, you know, keep the water out from leaking in those particular areas also. They're supposed to be sending me another rain guard for the west door. And then we'll get that installed for you and they should take care of a lot of that. I submitted all the final documents to Lisa. They include. They included, and there is a substantial completion form that we need to get signed. Uh, but I'd like to explain what that's about. So the one document that uh, that got signed is a can call of a G seven oh seven consent of surety. To final payment. That means the bonding company uh, sends an affidavit that they're gonna. Back the project for another year during the warranty period. And the bonding company will uh, investigated that uh. They'll maintain any costs and stuff regarding that. The other uh, is a G seven oh six A, which is the contractor's affidavit, the release of liens. Meaning that they've been paid and, and they're releasing all lien rights. And the G seven oh six is a contractor's affidavit to payment of debts and claims that. They're signing an affidavit that they paid all, all their suppliers and such. The substantial completion form. Uh, is a document which sets the, when you occupied the facility. And that's when we had uh, occupancy from the fire marshal. And we actually used the facility prior to that even, but. That, that establishes your one-year warranty period, which is set for February fourth of two thousand twenty-four.
So.
February of twenty-five?
Of twenty-four is when it started.
When it started?
Yeah.
So it's good until February twenty-five?
That's correct.
Which is only six months from now. Okay, I guess um. Yeah, when I hear something to the effect that it's hard to keep steel doors from leaking, I. This, this ain't nothing new here, steel doors. I, I don't know why steel doors should leak, but I mean, they gotta make them so they don't leak, of course.
Well, that's the thing that makes me nervous. It's like. Okay, we can try these, or we do these things and we don't get any rain no more. We're not gonna know by February twenty-five if they're.
You don't think you're gonna get any rain by February twenty-five?
We may not, if it stops here.
Raining right now.
The things ain't done.
Are they leaking?
Well, you're under warranty, uh. You know, what type of door you wanna put in, and back the front doors, we're supposed to put a canopy over. For one thing, if you get a driving rain, if you can get some moisture in there, I mean. The only thing you can do is tighten up some weather seals. It's not the door that's bad, it's just that. That's the nature of the beast, I mean. Uh, we're gonna get them sealed, I mean, we're gonna push to get them sealed.
No, well, I, again, I guess I suspect that you look things over and.
Ah, yeah, I mean, I've taken pictures, I've written emails to them. So it's just matter of getting the what, correct weather stripping on and uh, getting the correct uh.
So has uh, the committee or together we build, have they done their walkthrough and approved?
They did that long.
Okay.
We did punch list a long time ago. They occupied the facility for February, for fourth. But. So it's been under warranty this whole time. We're just pushing, get minor things out of the way. Uh, I think we get the door sealed back there, cuz I could see light through them under the sweep. They just made the sweep as wide as the door and you get your margins on both sides. And so they need to extend that sweep out to jams.
Yeah.
And cut the metal to the door, you know, so it closes properly. But uh, so I got them working on that and Billy is an squire, uh, Kirk. Kirk, yeah, should be taking care of that, so. And then Jeremy and I went in and it looked like there was a, where the stop is on the jam. It looked like there. That there was a spot that possibly leaked, so we went ahead and caught that, so. I'll go over there today and take a look, make sure.
Yeah.
We're not getting any rain.
Well, I guess, you know, I guess we're just making sure that it uh, that it's.
We don't wanna end up here after.
Yeah, I understand that completely.
Changing everything out again.
Oh, yeah.
Did we?
You, there's no other door to put in. I mean, it's not the door inside, it's the weather stripping around the door that's leaking. And at some point, you know, they may put in, you know, a small canopy or something over it, but uh.
The west door that had them plunger things, did that?
That got repaired too.
Got changed or repaired or?
Yeah, they were there and uh, it was before. Uh, when we had the big opening over there. They were there that day, and I followed them around the entire day. They showed me what they had. Uh, and uh, they went and repaired that. And then they added the new sweeps, the rain guards, everything else that we needed. Uh, on the door, so yes, they have been repaired. I followed up on that. And I wanted to stay there with them cuz I wanted to see who I was working with and stuff.
Yeah. So I guess I, I, I mean, you understand that we're holding you accountable for this all being, being done, you know, I mean, it's gotta be done to.
Well, I represent you, so you're, you're holding them accountable. I'm. Eating in that process. I'm not the general contractor, I'm your rep, so.
Yeah, and I'm not the inspector, so I'm not gonna go.
Yeah, I know, you're welcome to.
Yeah.
Only thing, other thing I can think of over there is they said that they. The floor in the kitchen was, you know, a little bit rough, meaning. That it's gotta be textured so people don't slip and fall. But uh, so I'm just working with my mind to. Other than that.
Okay, so any other questions or concerns? Shelley, is this the time that you wanna uh, approve this then, or?
Yes, uh, approval and authorization for the chair to sign the certificates of substantial completion. I'll make that motion.
Take it.
I have a motion and a second to approve and have the chair signature on the certificates of substantial completion. From Peak Construction, Hometown Mechanical, Crawford Heating and Cooling, Hood West Automatic Fire Sprinker Company, Stickley Electric. Um, for the Jackson County Fair Extension Building as presented. All those in favor say aye. I oppose. Motion carried.
Make sure that I'm in. No, I meant you sign many times.
Okay, and you have them, Shelley?
There's two copies of each of them, you sign on.
Yep, we'll do it.
Uh, as far as jail goes, uh, sheriff was over there. I did uh. Jim Cracker was over there and they asked if they could move some furniture in. I called the fire marshal and I got approval to move furniture in. Uh, so, you know, that, that was a couple of weeks ago. Fire uh, alarm company was setting other days, so they're getting, they had uh, getting their programs and stuff done. Uh, the architect and engineers were on site last. I don't know if it is anymore last week, though, do you say, believe? And we did the punch list. Uh, the architect and engineers did an whole facility and uh. Uh, architect and myself, we did punch list on the administrative section. And that.
Well, the architect was here?
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, was here.
Okay.
And both engineers, Dave and Dennis, were also here. So I got the punch list emailed out to everybody for those particular items. Uh, I gave them two weeks cleaning that up and I'm working on the punch list for the correctional area. They finished the vehicle Sally Ford floor and everything, so everything's ready to go. Spirit like Charmin's needs get in there, I've been calling them next week. Uh, they're gonna get in there and uh, finish up their stuff. So I talked to the sheriff yesterday that, you know. We probably ought to be planning and getting something. Set up for an open house. I believe you're gonna want an open house. And he said he's gonna be busy July twenty, the week of the twenty-third, I believe, uh. When the fair start.
Yep.
July twenty-third or something like that. So I said, well, then you need to set it up, you know. Either for the first week in August, you know, I don't know if you guys wanna do it on a Friday or Saturday. I mean, I think you're gonna have.
Oh, I know, sir. What do you think, Brent? I mean, I think we should almost have two. Two that days. Yeah.
I would say at least if we're gonna do one day, it would have to be a Saturday when most people are off work or have more time to. To come over and take a look at it.
It's, it's busy on the, the third and then you do it on the tenth, but I, I think you're gonna have. You, you probably have eight hundred people throwing away, so gotta believe. So I mean, the sheriff and staff are gonna have to. Have people there, you know, to lead people, you know, groups through it. It, it gets pretty active, so. I guess my only comment is just tell me when you wanna, you know, when we wanna have it. If you wanna go the week of the tenth, you know, since you got that, week of the twenty-third or whatever, just let me know and.
What do you think in nine, tenth, eleventh, something like that, doing?
Talking August or?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if we're after the fair as of twenty-third.
Too much into August, you're gonna have people competing with state fair and all that kinda stuff and schools getting ready.
Yeah, but we can't, I mean, unless you can do it on the first, second, third, or the second, third and fourth, you know, I.
When are you gonna have the contractors mostly out of there?
Uh, I, I'd need them out of there by the week of the twenty-second and twenty-ninth at the latest.
So we wanna make sure that these contractors are around here for our uh, maintenance people here to show them. What they need to know about this equipment, you know, whether.
Yesterday, so on engine generators, so.
Yeah, and he said, I talked to him this morning in the hallway, he said he had training on that, but. Heating cooling and all the other stuff and whatever's over there, air, air suction, ventilators, whatever they are, yeah.
I, I would like them to do training with the sheriff and staff on uh. You know, on the twenty, the week of the twenty-ninth, they have to give them four or five days training on operating the doors, operating the equipment. Everything else up the control panels. So after the week of the twenty-third, I'd like to do training that following week, which is the week of the twenty-ninth. And uh, so if you wanted to do it on the tenth, I don't know if I'd do it two days.
Are we talking about the training for maintenance or are we talking about?
Training for everybody, yeah. Control panels for the sheriff. The maintenance training that will be accomplished too during the course of it, I'll just. Uh, coordinate that with the Jeff and them and sheriff. I mean, yeah, HVAC we have to train on.
Yeah.
You know, several things.
So we, we did kinda discuss that, okay, so when the fair is going on, there'd be a lot of people in town already, that would've been kind of a. Maybe an ideal time to do the tours for the public, but I guess I was a little concerned that maybe we weren't gonna quite be ready yet. Um, and that is a very busy week for us. I mean, some of us are working kinda double shifts just to cover the day shift and then go down to the fair afterwards and cover that too. Um, maybe some, not so much for the jail, so much but for patrol, we're definitely very strapped that week.
Yeah.
And I just was a little concerned that maybe we wouldn't be ready yet, so I thought, I don't know if we can squeeze that in that week or not.
I, I, I honestly, I think it's a little too much, and I'm not to say that people are in on town, but if they wanna come tour, they will come and tour.
Yeah.
Whenever we set the date, and if they're not interested, that's not my problem, but, you know.
You know, and maybe we can put some signage up at the fair that Dale Tour would be then, that's the way, you know, there's a lot of people out and about.
So if you're training the week of the twenty-ninth. That is the second, third weeks, whether the end of that week, I mean, that weekend, does it make sense, or do you wanna wait till the tenth?
I think I'd just go the ninth, tenth, let sheriff get settled in.
Yeah, makes sense.
They're gonna start, I believe you're gonna start moving furniture. Uh, I believe either the tenth through seventeenth of this month, start moving furniture in.
Get the occupancy rating, so I didn't think you could move in until you got.
Yeah.
That'll be done this one?
I have to do, yeah. Yeah, I gotta get out of here and uh, you gotta get in.
We ain't letting you go anywhere till we're good and we're happy. I mean, I won't go on the record right now. But do you have them scheduled to come in sometime, or is that still?
I talked to Trevor Kabala, who's fire marshal.
Yeah.
And uh, he is scheduled. I gotta get Delbert scheduled to come in here. But I wanna schedule him ahead of time, so I'm gonna schedule him here this week or whatever.
Okay.
But it's gotta be done.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's got, we gotta.
I thought they couldn't move anything in till they, ever, the building, the fire marshal and everything gave the all clear.
They can't move. People in, but they're trying to tell me I couldn't move furniture.
Together rebuilt that they couldn't move in until after that was done.
Yeah, well, I talked to the fire marshal while Jim was standing there with me. And he said, yeah, as long as you're not gonna have twenty people in there setting up stuff, uh, it's just a basis. Then you can move furniture. I, I, it's gotta code that you can't move furniture in, or else I wouldn't be able to move a.
Yeah.
Hot water heater in or anything else in there, so. Uh, he, he gives permission to go ahead and move furniture. We just can't occupy system.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll have uh, fire sprinkler and fire alarm certification, you know, we gotta have week twenty, twenty-second.
So with that being said, I mean, we got some things kinda pinpointed maybe here for open house and such, so. Again, I have not been through the building for a while, or we got wires hanging around, do we got stuff to do yet and?
Yeah, there's, there's things due yet. I mean, not up front, I mean, the wiring, I guess it's. County's contractors, you know, as far as, you know.
I definitely don't wanna have an open house with wires hanging from the ceiling or.
Oh, that's not.
Ceilings wide open or?
Well, I can't keep ceiling tiles in there, you know, half the time, but. Uh, beyond the night, I'm working on getting STI's gonna begin to do fire final uh. Any wiring that's outstanding, so. Uh, I would say, but if you wanna hold it the ninth or tenth, that, that would be, that'd be appropriate.
So if we're going training and all that the last week of July and you're getting your occupancy rating and. Is it safe to say we could think about having switch over by the end of August? So like first of September, we could be moved over?
I, I would hope so, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm getting to the point, I don't wanna hear hope so anymore.
No, I, I would.
For something that should've been open in February, you know.
Yeah, uh, uh, I'm saying that if you hold this ninth and tenth, you can move in following week.
Well, you guys talked about wanting your protocols and getting used to the new, all that kinda stuff. I'm assuming that training will be taking place as soon as you get the doors. Training and all that kinda stuff, you'll get your glitches worked out. So by the end of August, would we be moved in and fully functional?
And to me, yes, if not sooner, you know.
Sooner would be better.
Yeah, I think we need to have the, so we need to get the. We get it, need to get it, to occupy it, get it operational, have the training, and we got the fair weekend there kinda messing with it. Once we get the training done, then we can have the uh, public open house. And after we have the public open house, then I think we should be ready to roll.
Okay, so, and this may be silly question, but do, do we have like Delaware County, they willing to come down and tweak and talk and. Help you a little bit? I mean, they're almost identical to us, is that correct?
I, I spend a lot of time talking to Delaware County. I've been up there several times, see the way they operate, especially right now as I'm trying to finalize some policy procedure. I spent some time up there, here, oh, maybe two weeks ago, a couple hours. When I was up there for transport, talking to them, seeing what they like, what they don't like procedurally, what they think what it does. So I, I feel pretty comfortable that we should be able to operate.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's, I mean, I don't wanna be one of the. Yenipig or nothing, you know.
Doesn't make sense to reinvent a wheel that's already been.
Right.
Put out there, you know.
And a lot of what we've done the last few years has been some trial in it here to see what will work and what won't. I, I, I feel pretty confident that procedurally we're, we're needing to be for right now.
Did have an idea of uh, people could pay to stay. Or pay to put somebody in the jail for a day, and then if the person really didn't wanna stay, they can bond out.
A money, a money raiser, is that what? What about, what about naming rates for one of the rooms, do you gotta? If you got a frequent flyer, you know.
They used to do celebrity lockdown.
Yeah, we've done that.
I'm gonna put a minimum on my name.
Well, I think it's a good experience, Joe.
I'm breaking the path.
Get, get the real feeling, you know.
Yeah. We, we, we could put them on the board.
We put you on the board. Okay, yeah, we could figure out something like that, I think, and, uh, I mean, it's gotta be a little fun involved here somehow, but but it's time to, it's time to move forward here, yeah, no, it's, uh, again, I, you get to the point where.
So I think if we, can we kinda tentatively plan on ninth, tenth area for
Yep.
a public open house, if we see that we get ahead of that schedule, I don't think there's anything wrong with moving that up.
Well, the problem is if it goes out in the paper.
Right, we don't want it to go out yet, that, that's what it is, but.
Yeah, we got time for that yet though, I mean, we got one, two, three, four.
I, I would say that. Yeah. Well, we gotta, we gotta get these contractors committed to a date, and I would say ninth and tenth.
Yeah, you do.
And, uh.
I would say please set them, they're non-negotiable, there's no, well, we need a little bit more time.
No, I agree with you a hundred percent. Do you have policies and procedures submitted to Delbert for?
They're not submitted yet, but they're just about finalized.
I, I would definitely get them submitted even if he comes back because I know he's on vacation in and out, so I would get him into him. Even if he comes back with comments, he, you know, he'll wanna make, make change something, I'm sure.
Sure. No, I've been in contact with him on this, so.
Okay, how are we doing for final invoicing and all that kinda stuff for the jail or?
Is final invoicing, uh, I'm holding all their retainage and everything right now.
Uh, just know, cause we're trying to, we carried over from last year. We were hoping all this was gonna be paid out of last year's budget, now we're crossing over. Do we have an idea about how much that is or?
Uh, yeah, I'm sure we do. I mean, Charlie and I do have an idea about what, how much is out there yet, yeah. I mean, we're holding up five percent retainage on all contractors right now. And I don't wanna pay that out prior to, you know, you know, try. That's the only thing we got holding over him, get the, you know.
But all other bills besides that five percent have been paid? That's, I think, kinda what Don's asking.
Well, I think we're gonna need to know if we got funds, right. Bottom line is, we got enough in the checkbook to pay the bills, I, you know. I mean, we don't wanna squeeze that either.
Charlie and Lisa and Matt.
Okay.
I, I, there, there are, I mean, the contract invoiced, you know, the contract amounts are set in the project.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they aren't changing, the only other change order we approved as a group was
Add-on, yeah.
was the vehicle salary part, which is now done.
For, yeah.
And, uh, so.
No, we should be coming down to the project to the point where we know where we're at, final dollars being spent, are we covered, are we not covered and you know, all of this is carried over from last year, so that's my question is, are we good? Do we have, is there light at the end of the financial tunnel?
You know, well, we're looking at the, we're adding interest earnings and stuff, so we are tracking and we know exactly where we are as far as group. Uh, for the project cost recap and we can go over that when I submit that, you know, next week or.
Cause we haven't seen that project recapping in a while, so.
No, and, and we have, we have.
It gets our attention a little bit, you know, so.
Like you say, the contracts are contracts, know exactly what it's gonna cost, you know exactly what we have left, I mean, we know what the interest was and we know.
Yep. So we're, we're putting that all in the project recap track and such. Uh, the only thing we bought was the TV enclosures and I don't know a lot of stuff that actually needs bought for the operational use of the jail, so.
Yeah. Cool. You've been in contact with Lynn as far as that, E O C and whatever he's purchased there?
Yeah, him and Sergeant Beck have been working on that, um, together, so.
And so, any other questions for John?
John, I just talked to S G D, S G T before I came over and this, well, going to, so um, I asked him about the wiring over that east wall for the connectivity for the cameras in the interview rooms. So he's gonna check on that, I wanna make sure they're not confused that the one the south monitor is the jail monitor, I'm hoping, cause they thought it was there and I'm like, well, just checking the guys, so we're not missing that.
Well, my understanding, what you said yesterday, and I gotta get a whole S G for gas, is that those my, two monitors that you're talking about are for the interview.
Yeah.
Which were originally set to go someplace else, but that's just an HDMI cord coming over to, again, to my understanding, so those aren't TVs. Those are just monitors.
Yeah, could be just monitors, yeah.
Okay, yes. There's a lot of stuff over there that's been installed that I have no idea what the operation is. So I, I mean, you got two separate.
All right, let's figure it out, guys.
Over there and so there are lots of goddamn TVs and, and cameras and everything else over there, so. There may be some costs associated with the E O C room. I mean, as far as touching and repairs and pain, but other than that.
Okay, any other questions for John?
Reached out while we were talking here, I got told the west door still doesn't shut right behind you at T W B. And that the doors are still leaking. Were the two things I got told.
Him and contact in here.
I should split. I got sent over from Amber.
Okay, I'll stop over there.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Andrew, anything else?
I think what Brent has is action versus my, which is not big, so I'm looking to go first on what you have.
So you're done with John, not?
Thanks, Sean.
I'm done with John, yeah. Alright, thanks, John.
Yeah, I don't need to get it with you too, that I'm.
And we're gonna come tomorrow.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks, Sean. Have a good holiday.
Well, I understand you guys are short on time, so I'm not trying to fly through this pretty quick, I got a couple, I think about three topics I wanna cover. The first is, uh, last week we had a missing person out at Eden Valley Park, uh, west end of the county, started off as a Cedar County call. It involved us Cedar County, Clinton County, um, Jones County, um, Iowa State Patrol, Department of Natural Resources, Clinton County Conservation, uh, Clinton County Medical Examiner, the Coconut Fire Department, and the Eastern Iowa Crisis. Couple people got missed in the press release that Cedar County did because that's where it originated out of, so I wanna make sure they get mentioned. Our E M A Lynn meeting here was out there helping and our Jackson County Conservation Department, Nate Johnson and his people, they floated the creek to make sure the guy hadn't fallen off the bank into the creek. Uh, they helped out, they got missed in the press release. I reached out to the, uh, through my National Guard contacts, contacted the Joint Operations Off, or Center out at Joint Force Headquarters, asked for some National Guard assets, uh, Lakota helicopters to fly the canopy because the guy had been missing since Tuesday morning. Um, Thursday night, we were out there until ten thirty that night with Iowa State Patrol playing, we cannot pick up any heat or thermal images, so if he was there, my concern was is his body temperature had dropped to where they wouldn't pick it up anymore. So I reached out to the National Guard to see if we could fly a Lakota helicopter, you can't rid that area out there, it's too rough, the terrain is straight up rocks, bluffs, ravines. Anyway, uh, that we can fly the canopy of the wilderness and blow it around a little bit and have three, four people in the chopper watching, plus you also pick up the medevac assets also where they have the Stokes Basket that they can lower down through the canopy for rescue and if we found them in a ravine or off a bluff or something. So I wanted to mention the Iowa National Guard too, we also had live find and cadaver dogs, uh, was arranging for them to come out because at that point, who knows? Um, like to thank Kimberly Kyle from Quickstar, she, Thursday night, they sent out about six pizzas for us, cause we were all out there working late. Um, Quickstar's treated us really well. Uh, our own Jesse Gerds, out of the county attorney's office, her and her husband brought out some drinks and snacks, it was very hot Thursday. Um, Friday it rained all day, uh, once, uh, Chief Deputy Cracker, uh, once we located the air assets from the guard never came because of the weather, we had to wait for a break in the weather, but in the meantime, Sergeant Brandon Beck was able to crack the code on the Google account to where that's how we located him because we could figure out where his cell phone actually died. Um, so it took us to that point, so we actually didn't need the guard assets anymore. So I wanna brag a little bit about Sergeant Beck, uh, being able to do that and having that skill set. But because him and, uh, Chief Deputy Cracker were out there Thursday, it rained all day, Cracker was with the deceased subject at the point of the incident, um, with a couple family members, probably out and raining for five hours, and Sergeant Beck was back at the staging area with the rest of the family and um, the crisis people and stuff, so just, you know, you're gonna see a bill for two pizzas on the county credit card and what, uh, two pizzas for those guys and, uh, that, um, cause they couldn't, obviously you can't leave the scene when you're there, so. Anyway, just wanted to cover that, um, I will jump on to, so in my budget last year, um, Andrew's got some bad news, but I guess I got good news. In my budget last year, uh, we turned in or we didn't utilize, uh, approximately a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars, so I would ask that hang on to that because we're gonna need that probably for the jail, to cover some stuff in the jail. And we're already over our, um, housing out costs for this year already. Um, so just ask that, what we turned in, please keep that nearby because we could potentially need that going through this unknown year where we gotta figure it out. So, um.
We don't have a disposing fund that we.
Well, I'm just saying, keep it handy. Um, because we don't know what we're going into yet this year and we're already, uh, in the red with um, housing out costs for this year. The other thing I have is the, uh, city contracts for, um, Baldwin and for Springbrook, this is where they're agreeing to pay some revenue into the county, the general fund to help cover the law enforcement, uh, uh, coverage of those two towns. Um, I don't know if you want me to get into, somebody you got left to respond?
Oh, what is this? This is probably up to, what are we, four maybe, Luann, I think we have done?
I think so.
So we probably have half, I'm guessing.
And rate the other towns?
No, they're all a different rate because it's per capita, it's like twenty-five dollars per capita.
Okay, it's always a twenty-five per capita.
Yes.
Um, I need a. So we need to make a motion to approve that twenty-eighty agreement.
Motion approved for the, for the twenty-eighty agreements for Baldwin and, uh, Springbrook.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and second to approve the twenty-eighty agreement and the chair's signature for the cities of Baldwin and Springbrook. A law enforcement agreement as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
And before you step down, Brent, I just wanna, uh, send some kudos out to Chief Cracker for his assistance on the adventure race on Saturday, he showed up and kinda helped follow behind when we were setting up signs and stuff on Iron Bridge Road that didn't have any shoulder, he kinda helped provide some safety. He also was on sixty-two during part of the bicycle run and he worked where they were jogging and he also set his squad car up on the bridge in Iron Bridge when a lot of the canoeers and bikers were making their transition, so he had a large safety presence and was doing, appreciate it.
Good.
Just make sure you pass that on.
Thank you, I appreciate that, yeah, I reached out to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, late Friday night and asked or wanted to know if they needed more personnel or anything and they felt they had it covered, so I guess I didn't come in because they felt they had it covered and so Jim was able to help out though while he was working his shift, so that's good. Good deal. So then what I have, um, just to keep the board apprised of some of this, June last month was historically in, I was about every way statistically, the busiest our jail has ever been. Um, we averaged over twenty inmates per day, uh, we hit two records, a ties of twenty-eight, two days in a row. Um, obviously before the mezzanine, twenty-eight would've been what we had in our jail, so we would've been shipping out of our new jail um, quite a bit this last month. Our current jail force being much smaller, we've had a lot shipped out.
How about our new jail is fifty-two?
Initially having twenty-eight, having not finished the mezzanine.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so we would've been shipping from that point. Um, so I received a bill from Dubuque County for eight thousand three hundred and forty dollars for housing for June. Um, we'll also have bills coming in from Clinton and Delaware. That minimum, I would anticipate that'll get us up to at least eleven thousand five hundred, uh, we have ten thousand budgeted for out of county housing for this fiscal year, so we will be probably fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars in the hole before we even hit July one, so just wanted to keep you guys apprised of that. Um, our numbers currently are down, we have eight in and eight shipped out, so that's again about four hundred and eighty dollars today we're spending on housing people out, so we are, uh,
Going through it open, certainly.
I agree, absolutely. Um, so very quickly, we're going through money there. Um, Nen had asked for a copy of what I was looking at in terms of jail supplies, um, of what we got, what we still need, so I can have a copy of that for each of you guys.
Yeah, so on that note, when, uh, you know, as far as items, we need to go operational with the jail, um, even though we still turned in a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars in our budget this last fiscal year, we did try to, you're assembling.
Get as many supplies as we could get bought previously out of that budget. So in a moment, we have a whole lot left to. No, the last page is all that we really need to order, that was stuff we would've ordered, but it was not gonna come in prior to July one, so we did not, uh, move forward on that since we have to have stuff in by July one. Um, otherwise we have what we need to be fully functional, um, with a full jail, so we're doing pretty well there.
Is that Dubuque's?
This is Dubuque's bill, yeah.
Yeah, so, and I, I will give kudos to Dubuque too, Joe Kennedy and, uh, Mike Meester up there, they treat us very well as far as housing out in their jail and I don't wanna go into a lot of details, but they treat us real good.
They do.
And we need to, or probably remember that going forward if we can help them out back, so.
Yeah, no, that's, uh, again, you know, a budget is a budget and last year when we had the budget, there was a lot of unknowns then, uh, we didn't know when we were gonna get started. We anticipated that we were gonna get going by February or even a little earlier, so again, it's not the fact that there's money left over per se, but we, we will do what we need to do, I mean, so I'm substantiating that. You know that.
The only other thing I also just wanted, obviously, as we have higher numbers, we have more medical costs. Um, we do have two of them right now that have had a little bit more medical costs, one that requires some advanced wound care and another one that had to have, uh, a biopsy for cancer, it was not cancerous, so we're good there, but again, just costs that were.
We had this conversation with Rachel back there, she's gonna take it to Miller Meeks and.
I'll do my notes.
Yeah, please do.
I ran that up my side of the flagpole. Yeah, so.
No, we need to keep pushing that a little bit, you know, I mean, we've been talking about it for three, four years, but they seem to, I mean, they talk about it a little bit.
They're talking about it more and more each year.
Yeah, and it's just, it's just, it just doesn't make any sense that Medicare they, they they put the burden on us, it ain't our responsibility if they get incarcerated for something they did, you know.
Right, it's not right to the taxpayers, but it's also not right to the inmate because why would you lose your state aid when you go into jail? Let's say you have a mental health issue now you come out and you can't get your medication you need again, so then you're right back to square one again, so.
As much as we push mental health, it's crazy to have to put people in that situation, so.
I see, well, Hillcrest is gonna go back at it again, they got more personnel up there and, um, they're advertising they're starting up their program that they kinda put on hold for a while.
Good, yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate it, guys, yeah. David, have a good, uh, safe and enjoy. Uneventful, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good one.
Um, I'll make a copy, I said, I don't know.
So you can make one of ours.
Oh, never mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else on our agenda today? John Hanson Cracker, well, that was Brent. Uh, we went through boards and commissions, any other business before the board?
Well, just throw a reminder out with the holiday coming up this weekend, everybody be safe and with the floodwaters along the Mississippi and stuff, just keep that in mind and be cautious if you're gonna be anywhere near there, so um, otherwise just have a great fourth, that's all I got.
Be smart.
Yeah, enjoy your independence and, 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 uh, feel good about it, but again, be like Don said, be safe and have a happy holiday.
Thanks, Greg.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Have a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carry, meeting adjourned.